Then we'll go ahead and start the business meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
All right, only changes on the agenda are E, no, C, approving the hazardous materials will be moved to next week. Bless you. So can we get, nope, that's consent agenda, sorry. Anyway, approval of the agenda. Sorry, adopt and approve. All right?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
Okay, motion by Josh, second by Amanda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion, pass. Any no presentations, proclamations, or acknowledgements, public comment? Does anybody have anything for public comment? Amy. All right. State your name and your address, please.
Oh, Jesus, you were just at my house.
I know.
Jody Lucas, 26501 Zerxes Trail. My phone has been blowing up with the confusion with the water, well, well pumping test. The stuff on Pete's Hill was the actual pushing out of the water, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, perfect. Has the committee been formed for the police department building yet?
The council will be asked to make, appoint the committee at the next council meeting.
Perfect. And then, hold on, I just got a text message. I gotta ask you a question. Back in June 3rd of 2023, Janelle Kuzniak made a general data request twice with the DNR, and then another one. She's just, we're just wondering when all that information will get from you.
If she made a request with the DNR, we don't.
No, it's regarding the DNR, but it's to the city. She made two data practice acts to the city, both on June 3rd of 2023.
To my knowledge, she has not made any formal data practices requests. There were some general questions via email. They weren't framed nor were they as a data request. So if she has a data request, we'd request that she fill out the data request form, which she.
She filled out both of them. She sent me a picture of it. Do you want me to send that to Linda?
Yes.
Okay. And any new updates on Niagara? Or the DNR, I mean?
We've had discussions with the DNR, if the council wants me to respond to that. Yep. So we've had discussions with the DNR. The DNR has indicated that they are expecting to issue a permit around the end of the month. Details of what that will look like, we don't know yet.
So Niagara will start building then?
So the process at this point is Niagara's preliminary, Niagara's approvals are conditioned in part upon having the appropriation permit, because you can't build something that needs water that we can't produce because they don't have a permit for it. So if the DNR issues a permit sufficient to accommodate them, then they can come in and apply for a final plat. The council honestly would not have any means basis to deny the final plat, because we can serve it, and it's been previously approved, so they have entitlements. And that was the intent when it was approved conditionally. And then, once they have the final plat, it's been filed, we could issue a building permit for the property. So all the work that they're doing now is at their risk.
Yeah, no, I'm not worried about their grading and everything. So they're going to, the DNR has said that they are going to give them the right to.
So the DNR does not work directly with them at all. The permit is for the city to pump a certain volume of water at certain rates. Niagara is just a customer of the city.
Sure, sure.
So the DNR is giving, and that's a common misconception that we find, is that the DNR is giving Niagara a permit. Niagara is not part of the permitting.
They're giving you a permit.
They're giving us a permit.
Okay.
Which we need regardless, because our current permit is very close to its current limits. Yeah, so the size of the permit was larger than we might have normally asked for to accommodate Niagara, but we still needed to request a larger permit.
And they're gonna give the city that, is what they're saying?
They've indicated that they're, they've indicated to us there are no red flags at this point, and we're interpreting that, that we will get a permit. The specifics of that, we haven't seen the permit.
Okay.
And they're not completed with the process.
So are you saying that there's like a, I guess I'll say slim chance that the amount on the permit could be insignificant for Niagara to come here? Or there's no red flag, so we're gonna get what we've asked for?
They are very careful in what they say, because it hasn't been finally issued. But in those discussions with them, our impression, so it's filtered through city staff and our consultants, is that we're gonna get a permit that's very close to what we amended, asked for.
And did you say that they should have their decision by the end of this month instead of June?
They indicated that they are planning to have it wrapped up by the end of the month. But in my experience in working with the DNR, if they give you a timeline, they're gonna use all of that, and often a little bit more, so.
Well, fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, then we'll move on to consent agenda. C is being removed. It will be moved to two weeks from today. We have an approval.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Second.
First by Josh, second by Amanda, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. No public hearings, on to general business. Administration?
First quarter financial report was included. As you note and know from past history, first quarter financial report is typically very boring, because there hasn't been that much activity over the course of the year yet. Going through it, there's no real big items of note that I would report that isn't already listed as a footnote in the report itself. Does the council have any questions?
No, no questions. Thank you. Public works, any questions on the monthly report? No? Okay. Engineering?
I have nothing.
You have nothing?
I could make up a lot of stuff.
Well, they're moving right along on all the roads. They're doing a great job, I think.
Actually, Macamare is done as far as they can go for now. They've got one street left, just Todd's dream, St. Mary. They'll have to come back, because we had to do a patch there for some repair work to make it a recon project. Otherwise, the rest of the town is done.
That's amazing.
Yeah. And Ryan's project is going okay. The rain hasn't helped, soils are tough. But they're working hard. They've got, they have Snarpsor left in West Lewis, which in services, so maybe mid next week that'll be done. And they've got two more blocks on the main, which they could have pipe work pretty much done next week, by the end of next week.
That's awesome.
Then we gotta figure out how to build the streets on the waterway.
Yeah. It'll be fun, but they're doing a great job.
Any update with the homeowner that was in here, asking for help with the wall and the work?
She decided not to take the wall in. She is trying to decide whether she'll have us replace it, which time is winding fast, or to have it replaced herself. So we changed our water service plan and accommodate. She's hooked up on a new service, and as far as I'm concerned, she can replace the wall whenever she wants.
So we moved it, the connection over? Is that what we did?
Yeah.
We snaked around the back of the wall, basically, and Ryan was able to accommodate that, so. It will require us to work through an easement agreement for her service on city property, because that was the only way to get there, but that'll be forthcoming.
We'll probably couple that. I think, I think she may have some encroachments on the city's lot, so we'll handle all that in kind of one fell swoop. Once we figure out where that property is, which our guys are still working on, because there's some discrepancies, so.
All right, perfect. Community development.
Just update regarding the planning commission meeting last Tuesday. There was a development north of City Hall, and that got continued following the public hearing to allow one of the adjacent property owners time to digest how the development would impact their property. And then the Mr. Ryan, Tom Ryan, RNF Properties request related to reguiding the Speedway and the Elko Marketplace property was all recommended for approval as directed by the city council at the March 13th meeting. So the last feedback you provided is what was before the planning commission, and that will be before you at the next city council meeting.
When is the next planning commission planning to go over the north property?
The meeting is on May 28th.
Okay.
It's the last Tuesday, May.
Okay.
Does it mess up timelines for?
We're still within the 120 day. I had extended his review period, and we're still within the 120 days. So if it would get extended beyond this, he would have to consent to it.
He also kind of went along with it that the meeting didn't pose any objections?
No, he's been aggressively trying to work with two of the adjacent property owners.
Do you feel any concerns?
No, I don't. I think that there's multiple options for how it could be designed, and all are fine. I don't think any of them seriously negatively impact the property to the south.
Okay, perfect. All right. Any questions for Renee? Okay, Parks?
Nothing specific that Jake asked me to relate. It's a relatively brief meeting this month. Next, we had some commissioners gone. I think we only had three. We just barely had a quorum. So the big item on our agenda, which was talking about alternative funding sources for parks, got kicked a meeting, so there'll be more, I think, to report then.
Okay, perfect. C, C, C.
Sorry, Parks, I was distracted there. Quick question for the Parks. Boulder Heights Park, any update on when that equipment's gonna get built and put together?
I do not have a specific timeframe on that. Jake's been handling it. I do know that the work that we're doing as the city is basically, it's all prepped and ready to go. I'm not sure what the schedule is for the installation. That's being done by the company.
I'm not sure the sequence. I know we have to put a curb in there, we hire someone, but maybe that comes after the equipment.
I think we're doing that after, so to make sure it doesn't get damaged during the installation, so.
And then, kind of indirectly, directly related to that park too, you guys may see some posts on Facebook about questions about a stop sign going in at the intersection right there. I reached out to a couple of the folks that had posted some of that and talking through it. So we're working through that, and there's that process. I knew I wasn't crazy when I remembered us talking about like a formal request form for stop signs or whatever, traffic signal things, requests. So I'll work with them and get them connected. And they've already reached out to Rich and Chief in the city, so.
Perfect, perfect.
To manage expectations on that, we're very busy right now. And we need some data to fully do this. So we're not gonna issue a report tomorrow. I don't know if we can do it next week, before we get the speed data back and that type of thing, so if you're asked, you know, it'll take a bit of time.
Yeah, and kind of what I was trying to reinforce too, when I chatted on my way home from work today, was just, look, there's a process too. So let's go through the process. And I didn't understand the full context of when they reached out, so I was just trying to get some more information that way. And then I'll direct them, like I said, into the form, and then there's a process. You guys are already starting to work on stuff, but it will take time. And, you know, ultimately, the way I phrased it too, was the data may indicate that it's not a recommended, you know, place for a stop sign. And then there's still additional steps after that. They could come ask us, you know, whatever, so. But just to really, not, yeah, instead of doing the petition stuff, which is all fine and dandy, but there's actually a formal process that we can follow and go through and get feedback and everything.
Where are they looking to put a, or wanting to put a stop sign?
Oxford, Andrew, and the other one.
Yeah, as you.
Beard.
As you're coming into the subdivision, there's that first intersection right next to the park. That's where the concerns seem to be associated with.
Good, okay. Anything else? Okay. Other committee reports, scale isn't until. Oh, I'm sorry, skip, sorry.
Josh cuts me off, Kate skips me.
I'm so sorry.
Well, I don't, I don't really have anything to say for C, C, C. We're scheduled to meet next week, but we don't have anything for our agenda, so we probably, I know you skipped somebody else, too.
Who did I skip? Well, that was for a reason.
As I said, I was gonna request to just have it removed from the agenda.
Save the best for last.
So I don't, we're not, probably not meeting next week, but if there are any updates for fire rescue days that anybody cares to share, I don't know if anything's happened since the last time we met. I know you guys have done a lot of work.
Go ahead.
I mean, you guys know more details than I do.
I don't know that there's really anything new. We have lots of vendors. We have six food trucks.
Something like that, yeah.
We have the antique fire trucks coming. We have the antique cars coming. We have Ninja Anywhere. We have a bouncy house. We have the Boy Scouts coming with their bow and arrows. And then we have the tractor pedal pole. The Beer Garden is gonna be smack dab in the middle of Wagner Park. And Wagner Park will be roped off, so that you can walk and drink the whole park. Pickleball will be happening over on the other side in Rowena Park. We're gonna look into, you can explain this one, the gaming truck. So explain, I don't.
Well, I mean, it's just a portable truck with, I don't know what they have, Xboxes or PS4s or whatever, that can get some of those tweens.
Roulette wheels?
Yeah, there you go. We'd have to change the orders probably and get a license or something, but.
Yeah, so we could do that. So really not a lot new. Look for, in the newsletter, it will have the list of timing and when everything's happening. That was a question I was gonna ask our attorney. Is it illegal for the city to post the sponsorships? And what companies they are?
There is a provision in state law that says that for community festivals, cities can expend public, like for public purposes. And so my initial reaction is, it's fine, but I would have to double check that with Andrea, yeah.
So all we wanted to do was go double sided and put on the other side just to say thanks to those that have sponsored. And we don't, we're not saying, you know, exactly how much they sponsored. They're just like.
In the ranges, the tiers, or whatever.
Yeah.
It's just kind of our way of trying to appreciate them. And if it's possible to do it, that would be great. If it's not, then, then we have other ways that we're going to thank them, but.
Yeah, I'll pass that along. We'll find out.
Awesome.
Are either high schools gonna be involved?
Lakeville South will be here. We're working on, Farmington originally was, and then they canceled because they had something come up. New Prague, we're working on a band, drum.
Core, maybe.
Yeah. The Steel Band will be there. Oh, and then we have two bands in the park. So we have Shimoda Polka Dance, and we have Self-Titled in the park, also playing. If you guys have other ideas, let us know, of things that you want to see or do, or if there's other bands. North, I don't know if you're gonna reach out. No, New Prague, you're reaching out too.
Yeah, I'm in.
Yep. So that's all we got there.
Thank you.
All right, so before we go on to other community, committee reports, Chief Brady, what you got for us?
Evening, Madam Mayor. Couple of items on my report today. First, well, both of them just happened today. Very excited to announce the deployment into our squad cars and our fire trucks in the next several days. A FST device, a fire suppression device. I'll pass this around to all of you. You can kind of feel it and see how heavy it is. This FST, it will break a window, that's the point. This fire suppression tool is meant to be, best phrased as a grenade. You pull the pin on this device and throw it into a home or a vehicle that is on fire. And this will, for lack of a better terms, explode, expel gases that will cool a home on fire up to 5,300 square feet. So that's a large space, and cool it 1,000 degrees. Oftentimes, either putting the fire out or greatly slowing it down. As you know, with fires, many emergencies, the amount of time you buy, the better it is. So if you can slow that fire down, you have a greater chance of saving the house and the people inside. If a person or a pet is in a room that this goes off in, it will not harm them, which is very cool. These devices came into our possession due to a huge grant by the Masons, and specifically the Corinthian chapter 67, Masons out of Lakeville Farmington. These units are, as you can imagine, very expensive. They're about $1,200 a unit. And the Masons and the Masons Foundation charity came up with 75% of that. Excuse me, 66%, two thirds of the cost. And then the Fire Relief, thank you to the Fire Relief, donated the rest of the money for these units. So we were able to secure eight units, one for each of our four squads, an extra one in case we use one, and then three for the fire department, two to put in their big trucks, and one replacement. I'm very happy to say that the company also donated an expired unit, so we can train with it. So what's coming up is all the officers have been trained on how to use it. Soon, at one of the next meetings, the fire department will be trained on how to use it. It is very simple to activate and then toss through a window. The weight is on purpose as well, along with the material that's in there. So it will bust through a home window. It can be tossed very hard. The most recent use of this was up in Buffalo with a house on fire, and it literally bought time for the fire department to get their setup and put the fire out, completely saved the structure. What we have coming up is we are gonna be doing coordinating with the fire department and the Masons and our local news agencies, and we're gonna burn one of our houses that is to be burned down for training, and we're gonna use this item there. We're gonna try to get news people there. We're gonna try to get the Masons there for all the publicity. We're very excited about it. These units are taking off. Farmington just got a bunch for their cars, and other cities are trying to do the same. Very exciting technology. Any questions about that?
Who's gonna be the person to try to throw it through the window the first time and miss?
It'd probably go through the wall of the house, too. It's so heavy. I think we're gonna have a fire department member do it, and we're gonna try to get cameras inside to show it. The training we have does have cameras, and it's pretty amazing what it can do. Great technology. We're hoping, much like AEDs, we're gonna be able to put these all over the place eventually. In city halls, in schools, in other providers, ambulances, hospitals, any place you might get a fire. Eventually, this technology is gonna take off. So we're super appreciative to the Masons for making this happen, the Fire Relief Board as well, and then the city to coordinate everything, so. Very exciting.
What exactly comes out of it? Is it just like an extinguisher?
It is very pressurized, and it is a, if you've seen the movie Terminator, the Halon gas that comes when the lab blows up, you know, or starts on fire. It is meant to, it doesn't choke out all the air, but it suppresses it enough to cool it down. But it's the same technology. It takes away the fire's fuel and slows it way down. And if it's a contained enough room, it can put it out. But what they really hope for is just slowing it down, getting people with fire gear in the house to save those people.
And I'm assuming it's a one-time use?
It is a one-time use. I think the shell can be given back to them, and they can reload it, if you will. But the thought is, it's one time, it's super expensive, but just think of the cost that you save in the house. And then there is some provision in there that they have gotten homeowners insurance to pay for it and replace those units as well, because of the money it saves in the claims. So I know there's something in that as well, working on that. And then also too, reaching out again to the Masons to see if they'll replace that unit as well. But very exciting news. No one else around has it besides Farmington, and then I think Buffalo, but more and more cities are going to it. And there was another use, I wanna say, in Oakdale. Yeah, it was Oakdale, but unfortunately, it was the night that the Burnsville shooting happened, so it didn't get much publicity or press. But there's videos out there. If you Google it, you can see it in use. FST, Fire Suppression Tool on YouTube, and I think the training video is actually on YouTube as well that we use. There's a PowerPoint on there, if you Google it, how it works and everything.
How long do they last before they expire?
It's a great question. I wanna say eight years. And they, the company gave us an expired one, and they're like, still works. It'll work for you guys. And then they recycle them as training tools. So it's one of those things that eventually they'll have to be replaced, and we'll either use our budget, or again, go to the Fire Relief Board or the Masons to see if they'll replace it. But very happy to have an extra one. And since we run four squads, if we're down for a while until it can be replaced, we can always keep moving them around and shuffle them as we use the squads.
And there's no known health risks with it?
Nope, not to the, not to the occupants. Rumor has it, it's less health risk than the fire, though.
Makes sense.
Just kidding, councilmember styles. The next piece of equipment, or piece of equipment, piece of news is, it's with mixed emotions today that I turned in my resignation as the chief of police in Elko Market effective June 7th. As you know, I've been as transparent as I can be with it, but I have taken a position with the Savage Police Department to take effect there June 10th, to be their next police chief, as their longtime police chief has retired. So wanna take a moment to thank everybody. I know several members of the council were here that voted for me, and several that weren't. But Mayor Joe Julius, Kate, Josh, I really appreciate all your trust you entrusted in me. I wasn't the, probably the most ideal candidate at the time. I hadn't been proven as a chief of police. And you guys took a risk on me, and I really appreciate that. I say this often, coming to Elko Market is the best thing I've ever done in my career. It was a huge risk for someone with 24 years in to make a big change, but it has been the best thing I've ever done. This community has been wonderful. It's been gracious. It's been kind. It's been very appreciative of the police department. Everything we've come to you with. I've never seen a more supportive council than what you guys have been to us. So the members that chose me, the members that supported us and our department sincerely appreciate you all. And the plan is, is at the next council meeting, have some type of meet and greet, cake and coffee appreciation before the next council meeting on the 23rd. More details to follow. We'll do a Facebook post and stuff like that. But more than happy to entertain questions about my choice. It wasn't an easy choice, but it was just something I felt I had to do for my leadership journey.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We'll be missed.
Community will miss you.
I appreciate that sincerely. Jody won't, but then again, I won't miss Jody either. I'm teasing. I'll miss every community member. I wish Jean is here. Where's Jean? I wish Jean was here. I could tell him. I appreciate him as well, so. Is he online?
Yes.
Awesome. Jean gets a shout out. If there's no questions, thank you very much. I appreciate it. And we'll see you at the next council meeting, for sure.
We'll see you before then, too.
Yes, I hope so.
I still have a month left with you, so.
Yes.
Is that giving up that easy?
I'm gonna be spending much of my time, just, much like the department was left for me in good hands, I'm gonna do everything I can to make sure whoever replaces. I'm gonna do everything I can to make sure whoever replaces me to have the best possible experience, so. That's gonna be my main purpose.
We appreciate everything that you have done for us, so thank you so much for your-
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, so on to scale.
So, scale meeting, general membership meeting is tomorrow. It's on cybersecurity. Neither Joe nor I were able to attend the Executive Committee meeting last Friday, although I have the notes. They came out, so I'll be sending them out to everybody for reference. And then, Scale Service Delivery Committee actually meets in two weeks. So, I'll be meeting the Monday before our next meeting, so I'll be able to give a report then.
I thirty-five?
That was this morning, and I completely spaced it, so the notes will come, or the minutes will come, and I'll send those out in a combo, so.
Any other discussion by council?
Quick follow-up, if I may. Related to, we've been seeing some questions, comments about like the water quality, or water quality issues or concerns raised. Is that, and maybe associated with some of the pump testing and different things, is that gonna be addressed in any of the permit stuff or anything that we get from the D N R, or?
Yes, likely, probably. We've had discussion, I should've mentioned that when Jody asked the question earlier, so. There, there has been some stuff. The D N R has informed us that they have received some concerns related to water quality, et cetera. So, as they go through and they're doing the analysis, if there are items that they feel have potentiality in the future, it's not uncommon for them to say, hey, if there are water quality issues, you need to have a plan for how you respond to water quality issues that may develop. If there's well interference issues that may develop in the future, didn't happen now, but could happen in the future. So, they want these kinds, so what we're understanding is they want us to put together basically response plans if the unexpected or unanticipated, or the potential for something to happen actually does happen in the future. Cause we, as the permit, we have a responsibility that if there's a direct impact to somebody's well because of our pumping, like a well interference issue, like their pump, we're pulling down just enough that it's affecting their pump, we, you know, the expectation is that we would address it. So, they wanna, they may ask us to have response plans in place.
Just a fine point, not just the future, I would expect we'll be investigating the complaints that have come to us.
Correct, yeah.
I was gonna ask that. Is the D N R looking into the complaints to see if it was related to the pump test at all?
They've indicated that they will forward them to us to look into, and so, we're working with them. We have a meeting actually set up for next week to talk with them about that.
And maybe just a follow-up, similar, with Niagara and, you know, the grading and stuff going on. Have we had any issues, or how are things going, working with the subs out there and communication with, whether it's the county and the in-and-out stuff? Is stepping going well, or any?
As far as I can tell, I deliberately drove down Pillsbury on my way downtown earlier this week, so that I could drive by at the site and see how it's going. And I didn't notice a thing, so much that I drove right by and forgot to even look. So, I turned around, and, I mean, it's clean, it's neat, it was quiet. Drove by one day, they were doing silt fence, but I didn't see any issues, at least down at the road or anything. So, I'm not aware that there's really been any thing that we didn't expect happening out there.
And i- is there a point of contact, like if residents out there, or our residents, is somebody, or the city, or is there a specific place that they should go to get those concerns to somebody so that then we, or the county, or somebody can address them promptly?
So, the general contractor that's actually overseeing the site, we understand, has actually gone, introduced himself to the neighboring property owners as he, they're around, and provided his contact information. So, in most cases, if there's an issue of something not happening on site, that would be a good immediate contact. They should make us aware of it as well. They can contact City Hall generally, related to issues related to the site, and we can follow up as appropriate. We did have a pre-con with the general contractor in Niagara as the future owner of the property. And the advantage we have on a project of this scale is that there'll be a full-time supervisor, and they indicated likelihood of a full-time deputy supervisor on site. And I believe the exact words they used is, nobody's on site unless one of us is on site. So, unlike, I would anticipate, based on my experience, that we will have less issues with this project than we have in a typical residential neighborhood. Because there, you have unsupervised subs just coming in and working on site. And I can tell you from past experience, you tend to have more issues with site management and those types of issues than we are likely to have on this site. They're gonna secure it. They're gonna have on-site management. They do, they indicated that they do orientation for everybody that comes on site. Not, not only for safety, but also what the expectations are on site. I'm not saying there's not gonna be any issues at all, but I believe that if there are, they will likely quickly be addressed. And we, Rich and the meetings he's had with them, the meeting I was in, meetings that the Chief has been involved in, and Renee's been involved in, we've continually expressed upon them their need to follow city ordinance and manage the site within the scope of that, and we'll hold them to it.
No, I had the pleasure of joining one of the pre-con, whatever, meetings, and I was impressed by. They're just, I mean, yeah, and I think we, or city staff, did a great job kinda laying it all out there, and here's the expectations. And, I mean, they didn't bat, it seemed to bat an eye at any of it, so, just kinda normal. Cool.
From my experience on these big projects, too, they're ahead of the curve. Their soup will lock up when he leaves and open it in the morning. They have surveillance cameras on site, which they indicated they're, which is a first for me. They're indicating they will give us access to those surveillance cameras, so that we can see even when we're not there. The biggest concern, obviously, is safety for the employees, but also, safety of the products there. At times, there's, could be very expensive equipment and material there. And then, too, if anybody, vandals, kids, anybody like that, it's gonna be lit well and camera, which is huge. So, I was very impressed of where I came from before. This is probably a small-to-medium-sized project for some of the construction sites, you know, I've been around before. So, we're talking seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet as opposed to what it is now. So, they know their stuff, and they've thought about every problem, public safety, roads, everything, ahead of time. So, they're very, I was very impressed. I'll put it that way, from a public safety standpoint.
Sorry, quickly. Legislative update quick. Rental licensing, the fun one that I was working on this year, finally passed after seven years of trying, so that will be included. So, cities will not be able to issue or require rental license for group homes and for six-unit-or-less assisted livings. So, that'll be news to a lot of cities around, that, it'll be just funny to see the reaction. And then, the other one was the cannabis, the municipal cannabis. That was included in both the Senate and the House, which was surprising. Shout-out to Rep. Koznick and Senator Duckworth for really doing a phenomenal job up there of getting both of those through. So, that conference committee is coming up. I don't remember if it has a date set, but there is language in there to allow cities to have, if not equal, access to the first round with the S E A applicants, very close to. And so, before it gets thrown into a lottery or anything like that, I think we prefer the Senate language over the House language, just because it's got a little bit more flexibility, and there is no cap. If we qualify, we automatically, we, the city automatically gets a license, so it's very administrative. There was some concerns on the Senate side that if every city wanted to get one, then it kinda throws the market out of whack. So, they're, they're gonna watch that number to see if they have to put a cap on it eventually, but that got through. So, shout-out to staff and Andrea and everybody who pulled together language and worked relationships, and we got it through, and it's pretty cool.
Good job.
Thank you.
Can I add one more thing?
Yeah.
There were two items I should've mentioned earlier during my report, but one is scale-related. The Sky County C D A bus tour. I sent out a email last week to see what council members might be interested. It is a full day. I have signed up Gina and Josh for that. If anybody else wants to go, please let me know, then we would have to publish or post a quorum of the council. So, that is scheduled for May twenty-ninth, meeting in Shakopee. And then, the second item is there is an open house scheduled at the Firehouse Grill for the Old Town Apartment Project. And I think it's on-
Nineteenth.
The nineteenth. It's a Sunday from one to four. Is that correct?
One to three.
One to three?
One to four, one to four. All right, the eighteenth was gonna-
It starts at one.
Yeah, it starts at one. The eighteenth was gonna be one to three. I'm screwed up. That's right.
Back to the quorum issue, just to make sure on top of that. So, it's on the twenty-ninth, and we would have to post it three business days in advance, not including the day of the posting. So, we would need to know by the twenty-fourth, that Friday, in enough time for Linda to get up a posting for it, so.
I cannot go, so I'll just put that out there.
I can't go either.
And Joe can't go either.
I can't go.
Okay.
Okay.
I requested off work that day, so I most likely will be able to. But if someone decides they wanna go more, that's okay.
And then, Linda did post the meeting, or the open house at Firehouse Grill. So, everybody is welcome to attend the open house for the apartments if you wish.
Any other discussion by council or anybody else?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Amanda, second by Gina. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion, or, sorry, meetings adjourned at six forty-one.